Okay, let's get started, please. Our topic is congressional power versus executive power. I want to start by just giving you one example of congressional power that's not very well-known. But to tee it up, I think it's been said that, in theory, Congress could constitutionally cut the president's salary in half, auction off the White House, reduce the president's staff to one secretary, and limit him or her to answering personal correspondence, which gives you an idea of the extent of congressional power. In fact, Congress did something along those lines when Thomas Jefferson took office. Congress went and—well, Adams had a stable of horses that were provided by the federal Treasury, and Congress ordered those horses to be auctioned off and told Jefferson, if you want transportation, buy your own horses. So, that little history will be expanded by our first speaker, and I'm going to introduce the speakers in the order in which they're going to present. And our first speaker is Judge Edith Jones of the Fifth Circuit, who has been on the court since, what, 1985? Is that correct? And was chief judge for a period of time. And then, our next speaker will be David Rifkin, who is a partner in the firm of Baker &amp; Hostetler and co-leader of the firm's national appellate practice. He's published hundreds of articles in The Wall Street Journal, The Washington Post, The New York Times, and so forth. And as a matter of fact, this most recent—this is your most recent article, I think, isn't it, David? In yesterday's Wall Street Journal, and I'll just read to you the beginning of it, which I found interesting. "Is it an impeachable offense for a president to resist impeachment?" Martin Liederman teaches constitutional law and separation of powers at Georgetown Law Center. He served as deputy assistant attorney general in the Department of Justice Office of Legal Counsel and as an attorney advisor in OLC. And in 2008, with David Barron, he published a two-part article in the Harvard Law Review examining Congress's power, authority to regulate the commander-in-chief's conduct of war. Our final speaker is Neil Eggleston. He's a litigation partner in the Washington office of Kirkland &amp; Ellis. He was White House counsel to President Obama, associate counsel to President Clinton. He served as deputy chief counsel of the House Representative Select Committee investigating the Iran-Contra affair, and he was also an assistant U.S. attorney. Judge Jones.
Thank you very much. To set the stage for a discussion of these issues, I'm going to go into history. And I had breakfast with my law clerks this morning, and one of them was reminding another one that he had only been born in 1987, when the other law clerk had finished up his term. And so, I am not speaking from personal knowledge about the events surrounding the impeachment of President Andrew Johnson. But I have read up on the subject in more sources than Wikipedia. And one of those that I would commend to you is Justice Renquist's book called Grand Inquests. And before that, there was a book written in 1973 by Raoul Berger called Impeachment: The Constitutional Issues. And again, some young person said to me recently, "Who is Raoul Berger?" Well, Raoul Berger was a fellow who did extensive research in legal history over a period of nearly 50 years, starting in the early 1960s. I became a friend of his when he was a spring chicken of '84, and he only recently just passed away within the last 10 or 15 years. But what had provoked his writing that book, you may think, as I did originally, oh, this had something to do with Nixon and Watergate? No, it didn't. Raoul got concerned, I believe, because the then-most recent event was Congressman Gerald Ford introducing a resolution to impeach Justice Warren O'Douglas. So, there have been—there's quite a rich history in this country of impeachment. I will add one other footnote. When I was the chief judge, we had to engage in misconduct, inquiries regarding two federal judges, one of whom, Thomas Porteous, was eventually tried, convicted, and removed by the U.S. Senate. And in my first, about second year on the court, I was one of the only non-recused Fifth Circuit judges who sat on the appeal of the conviction of Judge Walter Nixon, who was tried and convicted for perjury and insisted on his rights and was tried and removed by the U.S. Senate. And that gave rise to an interesting case called Nixon v. United States, which is not Richard Nixon, but Walter Nixon. And Walter Nixon contended that he could not be tried in the U.S. Senate by a committee of less than the whole Senate. He lost. And Justice Renquist declared for a majority of the court that most of the issues surrounding impeachment are non-justiciable political questions. And reading Justice Story or The Federalist Paper, one is inclined to think that most of the issues surrounding impeachment are indeed non-justiciable political questions for good reason. As Alexander Hamilton said, they're inherent conflicts of interest because the power to impeach is not the power to convict criminally for anything, and therefore, an office holder who is impeached may be tried. And if a judicial body like the Supreme Court were to get involved, it would be in an inherent conflict of interest, having presided over both proceedings. The impeachment is—was regarded by the founders, I think, as a baleful necessity. They had a lot of examples for hundreds of years in English law to draw upon of impeachments that were used to rein in the ministers of the king. Some of them were conducted for good reasons, many of them were not conducted for good reasons, and therefore, the notion of impeachment is hedged about very carefully in the U.S. Constitution. That said, it is an inherently political endeavor, and we will see this in what happened to Andrew Johnson. Most of us have studied Andrew Johnson as just a footnote to Lincoln's assassination and a brief transition between Lincoln and Ulysses S. Grant and the passage of the Reconstruction Amendments. Johnson, there was good reason why he was vice president. He was one of the few Democrats who was not in favor of secession. He was a Tennessean. Lincoln had appointed him the interim governor of Tennessee as the Union was prevailing, and brought him on as vice president. Unfortunately, he had much different ideas about Reconstruction than the Republicans who had taken over two-thirds of both the House and the Senate following, well, in 1866, I guess. And almost within a few months, they started planning, how might they impeach Andrew Johnson? Because he kept vetoing Reconstruction legislation, among other things. They set up a committee to investigate possible grounds of impeachment, some of which had to do with his personal conduct. The committee went nowhere. One law clerk was reminding me this morning, they set up a second committee. That committee went nowhere. Finally, Andrew Johnson provided an issue for them. What was that? He dismissed the Secretary of War, Stanton, who, he believed, had been leaking information to his political opponents at this point, the radical Republicans. And he had suspended Stanton in 1867, but then brought him back into office, partly because he couldn't find a replacement. And then, in early 1868, he felt obliged to dismiss Stanton, but he wanted to appoint a successor immediately. So, knowing that this was a case that was going to get into the U.S. courts on a question about the Tenure in Office Act. What was the Tenure in Office Act? Congress had passed over Johnson's veto, a law that said that any person appointed by the president with the advice and consent of the Senate could only be removed by the president with the advice and consent of the Senate. Sixty years later, the Supreme Court would agree that that kind of law was unconstitutional as a matter of separation of powers, but it was not decided at that time. So, when Johnson dismissed Stanton in February of 1868, three days later, the Republicans leapt on that and impeached him. And 10 days after that, they presented articles—not—11 articles of impeachment to the U.S. Senate, nine of which had to do with the abuse of the Tenure in Office Act, one of which was complaining as an impeachable act that President Johnson had been bad-mouthing Congress. Johnson hastily assembled a defense team. The period for reply and rebuttal, which are spoken of in the Constitution, were foreshortened. One of the members of his defense team was the Attorney General, who resigned in order to take on that responsibility. Another member of his defense team was Benjamin Curtis. Benjamin Curtis wrote the dissent in Dred Scott. He is the only member of the Supreme Court ever to have resigned on principle as a result of that decision. No doubt, he had quite different views from those of President Johnson on the matter of Reconstruction, but he came in to defend him. There were several other eminent lawyers as well. During the trial, one of the members of the defense team fell seriously ill. That person was—that man was supposed to have offered significant testimony. The Republicans were a dominant majority in the U.S. Senate. The defense team asked for a continuance of 48 hours. They were given basically half a day. The rules of—although the Chief Justice Chase presides at the impeachment trial, the rules for conducting the trial were not exactly according to Hoyle because it was ambiguous whether the Senate could overrule the Chief Justice's rulings, and indeed, they did so on several occasions, saying that the president could not offer the evidence that he sought to offer. So, it was a very interesting proceeding. There were some questions raised, I think, by the defense team about whether they were being given what we call due process of law. I think I need to start concluding my remarks. Eventually, as you probably know, he escaped impeachment by one vote. Seven Republicans ended up voting against impeachment. In the aftermath, there were various charges of vote-buying, the president trying to get support, the radical Republicans trying to get support from others. And some years aft— in fact, not many years afterwards, Andrew Johnson was—no, many of the people who had voted for impeachment realized that it was a political misadventure, that had it succeeded, it would have fatally undermined the power of the presidency. Now, just to put a little more point on some of the parallels or comparisons with the present time, I would note that the articles of impeachment dealt with the Tenure of Office Act, but in fact, those were a mask, in my view, for the real problems which had to do with the administration of Reconstruction, which is serious policy disagreements. The voting was entirely on a partisan basis. Andrew Johnson was impeached within less than a year of when the national elections were going to be held. So, people were saying, "Why bother? He'll be out of office. Ulysses S. Grant is standing in the wings. What are we trying to do?" And finally, he did have serious constitutional arguments on his behalf. Number one, that he hadn't even violated that statute. Number two, that that statute was probably unconstitutional. Piece of evidence he was not allowed to admit was that his entire cabinet, along with ousted Secretary of War Stanton, had advised him to veto the Tenure of Office Act, but he wasn't allowed to admit that. So, there is a lot to be said about this episode as demonstrating the difficulties, the political perils, and the threats to the presidency that exist in the nature of impeachment and what other members of the panel will talk about overriding or overweening congressional inquiries. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor to follow a great judge from a great circuit. I want to also thank Federalist Society for bringing us together. I can think of no other organization in Washington that doesn't just sponsor discussions on key constitutional law issues, but consistently and conspicuously endeavors to ensure that the panel that's discussing them has some balanced composition. So, since I suspect some of us might have a little bit of a spirited discussion later on, the credit goes to the Federalist Society. Now, to give you a slightly broader picture, at the time, we conceived this panel. There, of course, are already numerous unfolding battles between Congress and the executive branch. At the operational level was battles involved, shall we say, vigorous oversight process, pretty vigorous, and those battles are both quite partisan and are not, in my opinion at least, very much animated by institutional impulses. Now, of course, those battles are as old as our republic, but their intensity and breadth are quite remarkable. To put it crisply, as far as the Congress is concerned these days, there's not simply a single executive branch agency or department where we're handling foreign and domestic policy issues. It's not lurching from one act of malfeasance to another. At the risk of sounding overly humorous, I would say, since the Trump administration doesn't seem to have gotten control of most of the machinery of government, I find it a bit peculiar that all the agencies and departments have gone to seed on their own, but maybe something remarkable happened here. Another interesting detail to me, and somewhat depressing, is what I would call relative adurf, or the emphasis of Congress's long-term institutional interest in those battles. This is not how things were meant to be. For centuries, we'd had great congressional leaders from both parties who strove, in addition, of course, to being politicians, to vindicate what we would call institutional prerogatives, Article I. In modern times, folks like Robert Byrd from West Virginia, Ted Kennedy from Massachusetts, and I would say Mitch McConnell from Kentucky come to mind, and that's exactly what the framers expected, because they expected that the institutional considerations would lubricate the separation of powers architecture, which branch jealously protecting its turf and even trying to invade the turf of the other branches. And I think it's a bit sad—I'm repeating myself—it's not entirely true anymore. For example, we're just a few days from a spirited Supreme Court argument on DACA. So, I've noting that Congressional Democrats were quite supportive of the Obama administration's both DACA and DOP exercises, despite the fact that they both involved, in my opinion, what the British used to be called suspending power, not the exercise of run-of-the-mill prosecutorial discretion, but rather the power to stop entirely the enforcement of a particular piece of legislation. Only the framers rejected that type of authority, but it—to put it gently, seriously—challenges congressional power. What's the point of passing legislation on any issue when the president can ignore any statute he wants? And it did not happen to him, what happened to Andrew Johnson. And yet, Congressional Democrats were fully on board. Now, at the more conceptual level, we've heard recently assertions, most prominently from Speaker Pelosi, that I would at least say challenged the Constitution's core separation of powers architecture, which pretty much assumes that all three branches of federal government now co-equal, different powers, to be sure, but co-equal. Some of you may have heard Speaker Pelosi refer to Congress several times as the superior branch. Should have been, in my opinion, something that discomfited the framers. Now, the framers, as we know, were quite concerned about legislative supremacy, even expected that, because they felt legislation would end up being the most powerful branch. Devoted much of a debate in Philadelphia to figuring out how to give sufficient authority to the other branches to deal with this, but certainly not whipping for joy about So, it's depressing to me that the difficult questions, how much power does Article I has versus Article II, and what happens when they come into conflict, seems to be mostly answered entirely these days, driven by partisan considerations, depending on which political party's ox gets gored. And now, we're in the middle of a piece. There is a stance of the battles that Judge Jones was talking about in terms of a first presidential impeachment. And now, we have the House Democrats-driven impeachment inquiry, or to put it more bluntly, pretty much puritan impeachment of President Trump. Not unprecedented development. In addition to President Johnson, we had two other presidents. President Nixon and President Clinton became subject of impeachment process, and then, of course, Johnson and Clinton were impeached by the House but acquitted by the Senate. Nixon resigned. But I would say there are a few things, and hopefully, we'll talk about it more as we go on with the panel. There are some aspects of this impeachment process that, in my opinion, are quite different from one before. And by the way, I happen to think that, from separation of powers perspective and sort of a Democratic accountability perspective, presidential impeachments are quite different from impeachment of judges and executive branch officers, since it is the president alone who is elected to office by all the people. So, what's peculiar about the current process? First, the House did not vote to authorize the current impeachment inquiry until several weeks into the process, after a considerable period of time of secret hearings in the House Permanent Select Committee on Intelligence, and even after the hearings have started last week. Ability of the House Republicans to go witnesses and participate vigorously in the process remains firmly controlled by Chairman Schiff and the Democrats. I think there's a serious problems, incidentally, unlike some of my friends and colleagues that were not called with due process problems. I'm not convinced, but technically speaking, due process applies to impeachment proceedings. But I do think that there—these are problems because they certainly are inconsistent of centuries of Anglo-American practice and the fundamental norms of fairness. To me, it matters. The fact that judicial review, as Judge Jones pointed out, does not touch most aspects of impeachment process, does not mean that there are no applicable constitutional norms. And that also causes the impeachment to be even more polarizing than it would be otherwise be. Just briefly say that there are, at least in my opinion, some merit problems. Does the president's conduct rise to high crimes and misdemeanors as a matter of law? Let's forget about the facts. I expect us to spar about this, but let me put two things on the table. First, unlike the case of President Clinton and Nixon, but somewhat like the case of President Johnson, President Trump is being impeached because of his exercise of his core constitutional power. Now, I know some of you may say, "What are you talking about? They're articles referring to the abuse of power." And the Nixon impeachment, but I would say that underlying, core underlying conduct is cover-up, Watergate break-in, had nothing to do with the exercise of presidential power. And Clinton misconduct lying under oath was even—had even less to do with being a president. And yes, Johnson's conduct violating the Tenure of Office Act did involve, of course, discharge of his powers as the head of Article II, but it—to me, the fact that this all stems from Trump's exercise of his discretion and core foreign affairs powers is very, very significant. Let me repeat what Judge Randolph was kind enough to flag. To me, the fact that there are going to be, for sure, articles of impeachment that talk about obstructing congressional inquiry, in a situation where the president has asserted two judicially blessed and long-established venerable privileges, absolute privileges, for immediate advisors and for national security, and the House is going to do that without seeking to adjudicate this matter definitively, in fact, doing their best not to adjudicate this matter definitively by withdrawing the subpoena to Mr. Kupferman and trying to moot the case, which is now before Judge Leon, to me is quite stunning. Let me add on a nonpartisan note, even while I'm going to repeat what Judge Jones said about Andrew Johnson's article of impeachment, if I cannot help myself, because it did contain some snarky charges. And I'm just going to read from the very article that Judge Jones was talking about. So, he gave free speeches that were contumacious, and the quote is that he attempted to bring the disgrace, ridicule, hatred, contempt, and reproach to Congress of the United States, and brought disgrace and ridicule to the presidency by his aforementioned words and actions. So, if I remember correctly, the Senate actually rejected those articles without trying them, but goes to show impeachment does tend to be an ugly business. Thank you.
I too would like to thank the Federalist Society and Judge Randolph, Judge Jones, David and Neil for being able to be part of this very important and timely panel. I have to confess that at about 12:30 last night, I turned on the internet, and—is that what they call it, turning it on? And I had to basically tear up my remarks for today because I read the Attorney General's remarks from last night, and he said everything that I was going to say, so— Well, so with Judge Randolph's indulgence, though, I do want to—if—I hope I won't go too far over time. I do think it's important to respond, I mean, because he was speaking about the topics of this panel and because his speech will and ought to get some attention, I thought I would just give a couple of short remarks, but obviously, it's the sort of stuff that would warrant its own full panel, in fact, its own full conference. His speech was met with a rousing ovation. Many of you were probably there, and I have to confess, this confused me a little bit because, after all, I had been led to believe that the—that originalism and close adherence to text were proud articles of faith for most Federalist Society members. And yet, here, many of you are on your feet, sharing a view of the executive that would have been unrecognizable to the framers. Although I don't know if Mike McConnell is out in this crowd, he's speaking next, and Mike is writing a book about the executive power at the origins, and I'm very eager to read it. I suspect I'll disagree with a lot, but I always learn an enormous amount from Michael's work. That asserts presidential powers, prerogatives, and immunities that are entirely untethered from the text. Where do you find executive privilege? Testimonial immunity? The claim the Attorney General made that the president's prosecution of war, quote, "cannot be directed by a pre-existing legal regime," although it has since the start. And then, in addition, his remarks, I think, or his view of the president are deeply inconsistent with centuries of history and Supreme Court practices, precedents—for the handful of you who continue to think those old-fashioned modalities are relevant to constitutional interpretation. So, I hope that there will be an engagement by the Federalist Society, in particular, on the terms that you rightly champion about constitutional interpretation with the Attorney General's remarks. But before moving on, there was something else that disturbed me and many other people about the speech, and I thought it would be incumbent upon me to briefly answer a question the Attorney General asked about those to whom he referred as "the other side." I don't—I'm troubled by that reference. I assume that he meant folks such as myself, although I don't feel as though I'm on a side. He expressed befuddlement that we on the other side accuse this administration of shredding constitutional norms and raging war on the rule of law. According to him, he often asks his friends on the other side, "What are you referring to?" And his friends respond with vacuous stares. Not sure what that says about his friends, but just this morning, one prominent Federalist Society member and a very fine scholar offered this as one example, as an answer to the Attorney General's question. "How about when the president of the United States farms out the nation's diplomacy to his personal attorney, a man who he concedes was acting pursuant to his duty of loyalty to the president in his individual capacity for the purpose of leveraging valuable military aid and other crucially desired support in order to pressure a foreign nation to announce on CNN a criminal investigation of..." on CNN a criminal investigation of his likely opponent in the forthcoming election? Or when the president publicly declares he has tremendous power to respond if China doesn't do what we want, namely start an investigation into the Bidens? Or when he attacks career diplomats, urges the exposure of whistleblowers, tries to control DOJ and FBI criminal investigations concerning himself and those close to him? When he meets, when he insists that no other persons be present nor any even transcript be made of his meetings with Vladimir Putin shortly before affirming Putin's view, contrary to the American intelligence community's findings, that Russia had nothing to do with the interference with the election? Accusing countless legislative and law enforcement officers of treason when he's not busy taunting them with schoolyard references to their physiques? The list really does go on and on, that's just the last few days. I think most of you would agree, and some of you, I think this is very important, some of you have publicly said so, and unabashedly, much to your credit, that there's plenty of shredding of constitutional norms on a daily basis if you only know where to look for it. And that this previously unthinkable conduct has become, I think, the new norm, or at least the new normal. I just want to add one more example that troubles me of norm shredding. When learning about this blatant abuse of presidential authority related to the Ukraine, the subversion of American foreign policy to personal ends, and this open insult on the integrity of US elections, the president's Attorney General and Secretary of State, as far as we know, and this may not be the full story, apparently took no steps to end that practice. Contrast that with what we now saw not so long ago when John Ashcroft and thirty other high-level DOJ officials, some of whom are likely in this room or attending this conference, threatened to collectively resign in protest in the middle of an election year rather than be party to what they saw as a systematic violation of presidential obligations. I say, I make these remarks very much in sadness and in deep concern rather than in anger, and certainly not as a gotcha point. I hope that we will have our hospital room moment, maybe with many of you in the audience sometime soon. So my task here today to turn to the less contentious matters, perhaps, the law, is to mostly be descriptive and to give you and the audience some sense, things are coming so fast and furious, about three things. The first, very briefly, is a very important Supreme Court opinion, case now pending that many of you know about, that will actually involve Cannon Shamagian, Noel Francisco, and Paul Clement, all arguing with Paul on the other side he was appointed by the court, the Sela case involving the constitutionality of the CFPB's removal provisions. The second thing I'll talk about is the series of cases involving congressional oversight of the president and subpoenas. And then finally, a few words at the end about the lurking issues that aren't yet in the courts and may never be, but to my mind, and Neil's, I think, probably, are the most important, which is lurking executive privilege questions, to which we're very sympathetic. Both Neil and I were government lawyers, and we actually are quite, I joked at the outset, but I'm actually quite a big believer in significant presidential prerogatives, albeit subject to congressional or statutory checks. And so the executive privilege questions, it strikes me, are important and probably won't be resolved by the courts, and I'll have some words about that. So let's start with Sela. Statute provides, by the Dodd-Frank Act, as many of you know, the president may not remove the director of the CFPB except for inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office. We often refer to this as for cause or for good cause. Now Justice, then Judge Kavanaugh wrote a dissent in the D.C. Circuit, I won't go into detail, most of you know this, suggesting that the fact that this was a single member, not a multi-member commission, made this unconstitutional, even if a multi-member commission with the exact same removal provisions was constitutional, which is the currently governing law. I don't think this distinction frankly has any basis in text or original understanding. It's purely functionalist. Now, I'm a functionalist, so that's okay with me. I don't agree with Justice Kavanaugh, but I do think it's notable, and I look forward to the originalist and textualist briefs from many of you writing in behalf of the CFPB in the case, but I'm not sure it'll make a difference. I think the court will likely, but not certainly, say that this is unconstitutional. Of course, what's really at stake here is what Attorney General Barr said last night, namely, the very fact of independent agencies, it won't be, it won't be resolved in this case, but ultimately, Justice, Attorney General Barr's argument that if Congress tries to vest the power to execute the law on someone beyond the control of the president, it contravenes the framers' clear intent to vest the power in a single person, would, if accepted by the court, mean a radical change in American governance. Everyone agrees the president must retain some control to make sure that the officials can faithfully execute the law, and a good cause standard accomplishes that, as the Morrison case held. But actual power to direct and to remove the officer if she exercises discretion in a matter inconsistent with the statute, consistent with the statute but different from what the president would prefer? That would be the end of the independent agencies, something that Chief Justice Rehnquist, Justice O'Connor, unceremoniously rejected, along with all but one other justice, in the 1980s in Boucher and Morrison. And it's easy to see why. Imagine a President Trump or a president that you might like less than President Trump making decisions, directing decisions on the nation's campaign finance laws, or access to the media, or adjustment of the nation's monetary policy to advance his or her political electoral prospects. You don't really have to imagine it. We're seeing it now, the president wants to do just that. Okay, oversight and subpoenas, this is the main issue to which, that I'll address. And here, I'm going to go sort of rapid fire. I apologize, but if you have any, we can, we can get into it in the Q and A and afterwards if you're interested. There's six cases now being litigated that implicate questions of congressional oversight of the president and related questions. That doesn't even include the Kupferman case to which David referred, because I think that will be dismissed by Judge Leon either on mootness or no cause of action grounds quite quickly. There's motions by both sides, the House and the president, to do so. I think he will agree with that. Most of them involve efforts by the House, and in one case, a New York grand jury, to obtain Donald Trump's personal tax bank and financial records, for many reasons, but the most important ones are those cited by late Chairman Cummings, especially to see whether the president has undisclosed conflicts of interest that may impair his ability to make impartial policy decisions. What explains his inclination to accommodate, laud, capitulate to strongmen such as Erdogan and Putin? Perhaps nothing, maybe the documents will show that, perhaps something else. The case that's further, that's not me, is it? The case that's furthest along in these is Trump versus Vance, the one that you know that the cert petition was filed this week, which doesn't involve the House itself. There, the claim, the theory is that states, grand juries, are categorically precluded not only from incarcerating, not only trying, not only indicting the president, but from actually investigating his crimes, or whether he was involved in anyone else's crimes, in his personal capacity. Judge Katzman's opinion for the Second Circuit, I think, is airtight. I suspect the court might grant cert on this, just as in deference to the president, but I will be surprised if this gets any or many votes. I think it's a radical claim that even the Department of Justice is not supporting for reasons that we can get into later. I want to move quickly ahead. More important are the four other cases. In one of them, the House Ways and Means Committee is suing the Department of Commerce to require it to comply with the law that says it shall furnish the committee with any taxes, tax returns if they're requested. The other three cases involve parties who are willing to respond to House subpoenas or House requests. Deutsche Bank for the president's bank records, Mazers for his accounting records, and the state of New York, who under a new New York law would give the House committees Trump's state tax records if and when the committees ask for them. They haven't done so yet. In the last case, Trump's suit is now against the House, actually, that he wants an injunction in his personal capacity against them asking New York to share the records. Mazers and Deutsche Bank, Mazers out of the D.C. Circuit, Deutsche Bank out of the Second Circuit are the furthest along. Mazers, I think, will be, there will be a petition in that very soon. I think it will be granted, I hope on expedited briefing. I don't know what the court will do, this is the one in which Judge Rao gave a dissent. The Ways and Means versus DOC and Trump versus Ways and Means cases are still awaiting non-merits rulings from Judges McFadden and Nichols respectfully. I don't think those will be the ones that get to the court. It's important to stress at the outset, Trump is not asserting executive privilege in any of these cases. Instead, the arguments are that the House is absolutely disabled from obtaining information about the president, even in his personal capacity, and even when a third party is willing to provide such information voluntarily. There are three variations of the argument, very quickly. The first offered by both Trump and DOJ is that outside the impeachment context, Congress can only investigate anyone or anything for purposes of deliberating upon possible legislation, not to inform itself or the public about the conduct of current officials, not to discover whether they're subject to conflicts of interest, not to deter officials from wrongdoing, and that both the courts and Congress can conclude Congress doesn't have a generally permissible legislative purpose. It's a very radical argument, I think, I've written about it, we can talk about it later. Second, Trump, not DOJ, argues further, this means Congress can never investigate the president, at least outside of impeachment, because Congress can never legislate concerning the president's personal finances, not even to impose disclosure requirements. This would mean that many current statutes are unconstitutional, that every president has complied with. It would also mean that all the famous congressional investigations that you're familiar with, right, the Irvin Committee in 1973, Ron Contra and the like, Congress never had any constitutional authority to engage in any of those, even though no one at the time thought to make such an argument. Third, Judge Rao, in her dissent in Mazers, contends Congress may not investigate and certainly may not compel testimony or documents with respect to any constitutional officers, not just presidents, but judges, executive branch officers, and the like, unless it first triggers impeachment proceedings. That it has to do something with respect to impeachment before it can investigate the wrongdoing of any officers of the United States. I don't think this will pick up any votes. It didn't even secure Judge Katz's on the embank panel. But I do think the, excuse me, the Supreme Court will take up the Mazers case and possibly the Deutsche Bank case if the Second Circuit issues its decision soon, which I hope it will do. Then there are cases where the House subpoenas current or former officials to testify, and in those cases, the Department of Justice is making this claim of absolute testimonial immunity with respect to certain close advisors of the president and former close advisors of the president, such as Donald McGahn. In the McGahn case, which is the one furthest along, the Office of Legal Counsel, including when I was there, although I was recused from the case, has made, has been making a version of this argument and making it stronger and stronger and stronger for about the last forty years. It sort of emanates, it first appeared in public, anyway, on March 12, 1973, when President Nixon, this is at the very beginning of his second term, was trying to preclude testimony by then counsel John Dean and former aide Dwight Chapin. And he wrote that "under the doctrine of separation of powers, the manner in which the president exercises his powers is not subject to questioning by another branch of government at all. And therefore, it's," he said, "obviously it's equally appropriate that members of my staff not be so questioned, because they're just an extension of me and Congress can't investigate me." As I mentioned at the end, that position lasted seven weeks for the president. He gave in after seven weeks. The court may resolve this question later in the context of the McGahn case, or a case against, if the House subpoenas Kellyanne Conway or some other official who's making this claim, but I don't think it will be resolved during the impeachment proceedings, maybe not even during this term of President Trump's presidency. I do think it's very important, and I think it's wrong for reasons we can discuss, this absolute immunity claim. And that leads to my final topic, which is what's underlying in and what troubles me the most, and I think Neil as well, probably everyone on the panel, is that even if there's not absolute immunity, what folks such as John Bolton, or Mick Mulvaney even, or others would be asked to testify about in this context are things that we agree should be confidential almost all of the time. They're at the core of what we would think of as executive privilege, communications with foreign officials, communications with high-level national security aides and the White House counsel. I'm a big believer in keeping those communications confidential most of the time. I was very troubled by the leaks, for instance, of, much as I hated the substance of them, of the leaks of the president's communications with the Australian Prime Minister and the like. I don't think that's right, and I think it's very, very destructive. There is this issue, though, it's coming up now in the context of impeachment, and one thing that's really interesting, and this is to build on what Judge Jones was saying, the tradition, even among presidents who resisted their aides and themselves providing information to Congress in other contexts, always confessed, going back to the Washington administration, in no uncertain terms, that when it comes to impeachment investigations, of course, the House is entitled to everything within the executive branch, all of the, all of the information, all of the documents. Okay, wrapping up. President Polk wrote that the republic would be, the safety of the republic would be the supreme law, and the power of the House and the pursuit of the object would penetrate into the most secret recesses of the executive departments, and Andrew Johnson did not assert any kind of privilege. His communications with his aides were freely part of the impeachment proceeding, interestingly, and that until Nixon, that was the case, and like I said, even Nixon gave in under pressure, seven weeks after he asserted this, and long before even there was an impeachment proceeding at play. So I'm worried about executive privilege, but it might be outweighed by the need of the House to investigate. And I want to say that I don't think these executive privilege questions, which I think are the most important, will probably be resolved by the courts. They're being resolved in other ways, first of all, possibly, at least in some administrations, like Johnson, like Nixon, by voluntarily allowing the conversations. After all, the president says everything was pitch perfect, right? He wants you to read the transcript, right? Well, let's read all the transcripts, right? Once you've let this out, it might get out there. And even when the executive branch is, or the president is trying to keep officials from testifying, what we're seeing is really remarkable. White House Counsel Chipolone directed all parties not to cooperate, saying that the House's impeachment proceedings were unconstitutional and baseless, and yet many people are voluntarily doing so. Now, they're not talking about their communications with the president yet, but they might. And it's that sort of thing, people coming forward and resisting when they know that very severe wrongdoing is going on in the executive branch, and there's, and the president isn't making things available to Congress, that will probably be the way that much of this gets out in the public as it has already. And I just wanted to make one slight correction to Judge Jones, but I taught it wrong for years, and I think most of us do. President Johnson did not remove Edwin Stanton. He tried to remove Edwin Stanton, but Stanton stayed in office, literally stayed in the office. His replacement acting secretary Lorenzo Thomas couldn't get in the building. Stanton locked him out and continued acting as Secretary of War. Talk about the deep state, right? What's that, Judge?
He did not continue acting. He was not allowed to continue acting.
Who?
Stanton.
Maybe I'm wrong. Okay, maybe we'll debate this. I thought Stanton remained in the building as far as I know. It's a better story, anyway. Okay.
And you know what? And you know what? That's just like the protesters who took over the president's office at Columbia University, but they didn't become the president.
No, I'm not.
Littered the office.
I agree. And I actually think, I actually don't think Stanton did the right thing, so I didn't mean to suggest that, but I do think that...
May I interrupt you?
Sure.
I've had the experience as a moderator every once in a while, and a famous Harvard professor, who will go unnamed, kept going on and on and on, and he said, "The judge is looking for a gavel." And I said, "No, I'm looking for a US attorney."
Well, since I believe in the power of US attorneys to prosecute, I will sit now and talk more later.
So there's a note up here, presumably written to Marty, which is underlined exclamation point. It says something like, "Please wrap up." And then below that, it says, "Please wrap up." And then below that, it says, "Please wrap up." So anyway, I also want to thank everybody for the invitation. I've attended a couple of these, and I always appreciate the invitation. And mostly, and I think, I can't remember if my friend, Mr. Rifkin, said this or not, this organization is to be praised for having people like Marty and me appear on these panels. We recognize you don't always agree with what we say, but we're treated with respect, and we're listened to, and maybe we'll help you think through some of the issues. We don't necessarily think we're going to change your mind. I will not go as long as Marty, and I don't speak as quickly as Marty. So those of you whose ears are bleeding, I will try to slow down a little bit. The one thing, there are just a couple of comments I want to say in response to some of the things that were said, which was one is, in the spring, I teach a seminar at Harvard Law School on presidential power, and you could tell from the list of cases that Marty went through that the syllabus is going to expand once again in the spring as these cases come down. Already, the biggest complaint from my class is that I assign them way too much work. A couple other sort of issues. I was fascinated as well by the DACA argument earlier this week. I was actually, I have to say, I was surprised that the court took the case, because it went straight from district judges to courts, to the Supreme Court, if I'm remembering correctly. And all the district judges, including Judge Bates, who's certainly not a rabble-rouser, all concluded that the determination that because of DAPA, DACA was illegal, was not appropriate. But as a policy matter, if the president wanted to do it, the president could do it. There was not, everybody said, just go ahead and do it. And it's sort of odd that the administration essentially refused to go ahead and make the policy determination and instead took it to the Supreme Court. And I was equally surprised, actually, that the Supreme Court took it. It seemed like something that was pretty easily solvable without getting the Supreme Court involved. without getting the Supreme Court involved. David, I just have, you know, you have your Pelosi quote about, "We're the superior branch." I just want to come back with my Trump quote, which is, "Under Article II, I can do anything I want." I'm pretty sure people in this room don't believe that. I assure you that President Obama would not have believed that as well. And finally, the only other thing I want to say, this is a tough crowd, if you disagree with that. So actually, since, and again, I then will race through the rest of my remarks, although I won't talk quickly. So on DACA, which was the one that took place when I was the White House counsel, various interest groups would come in and talk to the president, and they would push him, "You have to, you know, you should go big on this. You should include as many people as possible." And I was usually in the room, and he would, at some point invariably, turn and point at me and say, "I'll go as far as he lets me go." Well, that didn't work out so well. Lost before Judge Hanham, lost before the Fifth Circuit. I think you were not on the panel, if I'm remembering correctly. And I think we didn't seek en banc, because we wanted to get straight to the Supreme Court. And actually, it was ended up 4-4 in the Supreme Court, so that's the way it was resolved. So let me just talk a little bit. I'm going to talk about some of these conflicts that others have talked about in a much more practical sense. And like Marty, and probably even more than like Marty, I'm a pro-president person in these arguments. I worked for President Clinton during the Whitewater and Monica Lewinsky investigation. I argued in Ray Espy, which is probably the leading case on presidential communications and executive privilege. That was my argument in the D.C. Circuit. I argued the Lindsey case, which had to do with the attorney-client privilege, governmental and attorney-client privilege. I actually lost that one. I think Judge Randolph, I can't remember, I don't, I can't remember if you were on that panel or not, actually. That's, I was thinking you were the third judge. I remember Judge Rogers and Judge Tadle, and I was thinking you were the third judge. So Judge Randolph voted against me, and I lost. And in addition--
I was in the argument.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm going to relay that to my clients immediately. So in addition, and this is sort of, and Marty talked about this a little bit, this issue has come up a lot about absolute immunity from executive branch officials responding to congressional testimony. The most recent opinion on that in the Obama administration was actually written to me in the summer of 2014, and it involved David Seamus, who at the time was head of the Office of Public Engagement. I can't remember what it was called. And he'd been subpoenaed by Chairman Issa, and ordered to testify, and I got an OLC opinion that said that he did not have to respond, actually, in response to those. It was quite a narrow opinion. It applied to current officials. I actually think that the principles, I mean, I haven't completely thought through this, but I don't actually think the principles that at least concern me apply to former officials, the way I thought about it. And I saw this, actually, in the Clinton administration, a number of you will probably remember this, where there are just waves of people were called up to testify in various different proceedings. I testified before Congress more than once in the Whitewater investigation. My worry about this is that Congress can essentially disable the president from performing his function if he can occupy all of his aides. The president has to work through his aides, and if he can tie up the aides, if they can tie up the aides, they can really disable the president from performing his function. I think that that is a valid issue. I haven't really thought through whether it's still valid in an impeachment inquiry, and I think, I just have to think more about that. Marty had some comments about that. I think more about that. I don't really think that the issue is all that valid, actually, with prior former officials, and so as to a John Bolton or a Don McGahn. I think that should be fairly easy. I don't know how the courts are going to come out, but I actually think that that should be fairly easy. Let me get to just a little, few more nuts and bolts issues. The Cipollone letter, Pat was my partner at Kirkland Ellis for a time. He left Kirkland, actually, when I was at the White House. I have to say, I assume Pat is not in the audience. I assume he's got important things he's doing at the moment, Pat, obviously, being the White House counsel. I wouldn't have sent the letter. I wouldn't have sent it for two reasons, which was, one, it was essentially a non-legal letter. I mean, David talked about assertions of privilege. It was mostly a complaint that the process is unfair. And, you know, every criminal defendant sitting in jail thinks he is there because of an unfair process. And having a claim of an unfair process is not the type of privilege that is typically, excuse me, recognized. But there's probably a more practical reason that I would not have sent it, which is, I learned in the White House, and frankly, presidents typically learn in the White House, you have some control over senior advisors. You have less control over the career people, the OMB people, the NSC people who are in the White House, their career, much less control over them. You have virtually no control over officials who are in the State Department and the Department of Defense. And so the likelihood that this letter was going to be effective beyond the people quite close to the president, I think, had a very low likelihood of success, and that's exactly the way it turned out. And then we had this weird circumstance. If one person in the White House has a claim to absolute immunity from testifying, it's Mick Mulvaney, the chief of staff. And so for a while, he was going to join this lawsuit that was being brought, which I think of as kind of an interpleter action, to get Judge, now it's got assigned to Judge Leon, to decide sort of which of these sides he had to take. I don't, I assume Mr. Mulvaney had thought it through, but by subjecting himself to the lawsuit, he kind of had, I think, had to agree to the outcome. And the outcome might be, or might have been, he's now withdrawn himself from the litigation, but might have been a court order that he actually had to appear and testify. And unlike, in my view, Mr. Bolton, whom I think no longer has the absolute immunity from testifying, I think Mulvaney probably still does, unless it's overridden by the impeachment process. And as I say, I really haven't thought that through. But he got himself in kind of a wear position. I'm not sure why, in the world, he would have done it. We've talked a little bit about various different power issues. I want to just do this just for a minute. There are not that many enforcement mechanisms, actually, as you all know, that the Congress has. It has a civil contempt process, which frankly, in a matter like this, is not very effective. I assume that the theory, that Mr. Cooper, the lawyer for Cooperman, I guess he's the lawyer for Bolton, although I'm not sure that Bolton has actually joined the case, as opposed to just say, either going to join it or say, "I'll follow the outcome," or maybe really neither. But I assume it's, in some ways, it's a form of stall, because if Judge Leon rules against him, there'll be appeal and the like. We saw this a little bit in Fast and Furious. Fast and Furious, I was not there when the litigation started, but I was there near the end. I'll tell everybody, I did everything I can to resolve that case and moot it. And the House of Representatives, Republican, obviously, at the time, would not take yes for an answer. I think we gave them every document, and they sort of kept changing the goalposts. But that litigation went on, I guess, until the Trump administration began. So particularly in an impeachment process such as this, the civil enforcement mechanism, which has to go through the courts, is really just not an effective mechanism, in my view. The second mechanism is criminal contempt. There is a statute that, there's a discussion sometimes about inherent contempt. I'm not going to get into that. It hasn't happened in a long time. I don't know whether it's valid anymore. But there's a criminal contempt statute, which permits Congress to refer for criminal prosecution. It's a misdemeanor, but incarceration up to 12 months permits Congress to refer to the Justice Department for prosecution, people who do not appear in response to a testimony or do not provide documents in response to a testimony. And, you know, frankly, there have been a number of people who have refused to respond to the House Intelligence Committee. Rudy Giuliani would be one. Mr. Giuliani has absolutely no privilege not to appear. There's no claim he has no privilege not to appear. He might have a attorney-client privilege not to reveal certain communications with his client, but we know he did lots more than just talk to his client. He has absolutely no privilege not to appear, and various others, I think, have no privilege. And this is the reason that when things got, sort of looked like they were, might move towards contempt on David Seamus, that I went to the Office of Legal Counsel and got an opinion that he was exempt from appearing, and the Office of Legal Counsel opinion essentially binds the Justice Department. He could not thereafter be prosecuted. But I will tell you, anybody who doesn't have an OLC opinion exempting them will run a serious risk of prosecution. And so you're all thinking to yourself, "Well, look, what difference does it make? It's, you know, Attorney General Barr is certainly not going to authorize any investigation." Well, you know, there's going to be an election in about a year, and I don't think the statute of limitations will have run. And I think all those people need to think through to themselves, "Do I actually have a valid reason not to appear?" And frankly, I would urge, as to those people without a legitimate claim, that the House of Representatives go forward and urge a criminal contempt, or make a criminal contempt finding. And then just the last thing I want to say, and I think this will be interesting, I don't know if it's going to be used or not, but in the impeachment rules, which will apply when we get, remember, impeachment takes place in front of the Judiciary Committee. When we get there, Congress has written in a provision that would permit the chairman to bar administration lawyers, I think in whole or in part, it'll never happen in whole, to the extent the administration has refused to cooperate and refused to produce various information in connection with the inquiry. As those of you who are litigators in this room know, it's actually a fairly common remedy in civil litigation. If a party refuses to provide documents in response to, you know, subpoenas or engages some sort of obstruction of justice, it's actually a fairly common preclusion remedy, which has been written in. It'll be interesting to see whether it's actually used. I think as a legal matter, it would be perfectly appropriate. I think the chairman will have to think through, am I, if Chairman Nadler uses it, I think Chairman Nadler will have to think through, am I giving a process talking point to the Republicans that I don't particularly really need? Any event, thank you all. Looking forward to the question and answer period.
Before we get to that, I'd just like to fill in a few blanks. The statute that Neil was talking about says that when a House or Senate committee, or the House or Senate refers a criminal contempt citation to the U.S. Attorney, it says, "A report shall be certified," I'm quoting, "to the appropriate United States attorney, whose duty it shall be to bring the matter before a grand jury for its action." But the Department of Justice and the OLC has long interpreted that to give prosecutorial discretion to the Attorney General and the U.S. Attorney. And there's another thing that I think, in light of all the reports that we've been reading about and some of the remarks that have been made today, the OLC, the Office of Legal Counsel at DOJ, also has decided that the contempt of Congress statute was not intended to apply and could not constitutionally be applied to an executive branch official who asserts the president's claim of executive privilege. And more than that, it says that when the president directs or endorses noncompliance with a subpoena, and that's happened, such as where the official refuses to disclose information pursuant to the president's decision, that the Department of Justice will not take action against that official. So that's where we are. I'd like to, first of all, if any of the members, or any of the speakers, presenters, would like to comment on anybody else's remarks, or we'll go right to questions.
Judge Randolph, I appreciate that. I'll be very brief. I happen to disagree with Marty and Neil about the scope of those privileges. As far as the immediate advisor's privilege, if I'm not mistaken, actually goes back, for articulation, to a 1971 OLC opinion by young William Rehnquist, does not just apply in situations where you can tie up the president's advisers. There's an excellent language that was loosely referred to, I think, by Neil, that most people are presidents out their egos, since the president cannot command members of Congress to appear before him. They cannot command him to appear before him. So I think it applies equally. The other privilege, national security privilege, I think was best articulated in the opinion by Mike Lutick in 1989, that I privileged to read when I was working for Boyd and Gray. It is more venerable. It predicated upon a couple of things, including the state secrets privilege, which was first asserted by Jefferson and recognized by the court in 1807. I think that those privileges are vigorous. I think if a Supreme Court ever to reach the merits, I would be stunned if both of them were rejected. And by the way, I emphatically do not agree that the impeachment reshuffles the deck in any way. It does not abolish or alter separation of powers. It's the president's policy choice, whatever he wishes to produce testimony or documents. But to me, the context does not matter. To make an obvious point, ladies and gentlemen, these are absolute privileges. There's no balancing. If they are properly invoked, unless you scrub them, it doesn't matter if it's oversight or impeachment. And my only other point to Marty would be this. The extent of presidential immunity from civil litigation, which was addressed in Paula Jones, the extent of presidential nonimmunity from investigation, that of course is reflected in the two OLC opinions, is not a bright-line test. It is a test driven by the degree of encumbrance, the degree of imposition on the president. What I would say gently, if you read the Paula Jones opinion, the court clearly acknowledged that if it so happened that the president would be confronted, not of a single case once in a while, but with an avalanche of cases, they might feel differently. I would just stop by noting, I don't think anybody in this room would disagree, but this particular president, whatever you think of him, has been presented with avalanche of lawsuits, investigations, and all sorts of efforts designed to impede his ability to charge his powers. I just want to keep this context in mind for all of you. Thank you.
Could I? So just very quickly, I mean, look, everybody has to remember that OLC is not a court. It doesn't bind anybody except the Justice Department. And so in the Myers, Harriet Myers and, I guess it was Josh Bolton litigation, that took place at the end of the Bush administration, Judge Bates, I mentioned him earlier, Judge Bates, Ken Starr's deputy in the Clinton Independent Counsel investigation, appointed by a Republican, nobody's, you know, bleeding-heart liberal, basically ruled that both Bolton and Myers had to appear before Congress and said, "I, you know, what the OLC says, that's interesting, but it's got nothing to do with me. It is a, they are a party to a litigation, and it's interesting, but it doesn't bind me." And Marty, you're better at cases than I am. So my recollection, and I'm going to say one more thing before I turn it to you. My recollection is that Chief Judge Howell, or maybe one of the judges in New York, similarly, in the last six months, made a very similar point, which is, the OLC opinion was cited to him or her, and the response was, "Well, you know, that's interesting as analysis by smart people, but it really has nothing to do with the judicial function."
Neil, just one sentence. That opinion specifically says, Judge Bates' opinion, that it would have been different if it was national security, which is unique here, two privileges working together. I can give you a precise site, if you want.
I mean, that's more detail than I remember from that case. So, look, maybe you're right, but I don't think it's because of the OLC opinion as opposed to because, there's no doubt, OLC opinions do not bind courts. And let me just, on your last point, David, I just want to say, I was in the Clinton administration, and I know that President Trump talks about nobody's ever been investigated as much as he has. Boy, look, I was there, you know. Chairman Burton sent us a dozen subpoenas, I'm pretty sure, every day. He was sued like crazy. And so I would, look, I get there have been a lot of litigation involving the president, but I'm not sure that, at first, I'm not sure comparisons work, but I'll tell you from personal experience, there was a lot raining down on the Clinton administration.
Yeah, go ahead.
Two quick points in response to David. The first is, the OLC opinion, the 2000 OLC opinion, saying the president couldn't be indicted while he was in office, did so in large part because it said that the grand jury could continue to investigate him. That's why I think that OLC argument, opinion itself, cuts against the argument in the New York case. But much more importantly, on the privilege question, I'm going to slightly disagree with David, but end in a place where I think we might agree. I mean, he said that the privilege is absolute. You know, that, it seemed to be before 1974, but the holding of US versus Nixon was that it was subject to a balancing. And in the impeachment context, the history is that the presidents have realized that the balance is on Congress's side when you get to impeachment. the balance is on Congress's side when you get to impeachment, Washington, Polk, the statements are quite dramatic and quite unequivocal. But if it were really put to courts to make that balancing in an impeachment context, I'm very concerned about that prospect. This is where David and I are maybe on the same page, because the court would have to balance the need of the House in the context, you know, and make an assessment about how serious the allegation of high crimes and misdemeanors might be, something that I think the courts will and ought to be very wary about getting involved in. And so I actually think these privilege questions will be mostly resolved outside of courts, even, especially in the impeachment context, and maybe not as categorically as they were under most administrations throughout most of our history.
I can't tell, the lights are so bright. Is anybody up at the microphone? Yes.
Hi, Greg Dolan from University of Baltimore. I actually want to pick up where David left off, on this idea of balancing, and I guess perhaps this is a question for mostly for Marty, but I guess, the question is, what test do you think courts should use in order to balance, I mean, how does one figure out how important congressional need for investigation is versus whatever the president's interest in keeping information private? Because it seems to me that there is not necessarily a very good judicial standard to adjudicate it, and ultimately, if Congress is unhappy with the information being provided, it can simply, you know, go, it can impeach, or it can do some other things, as Judge Randolph began this whole thing, can reduce presidency to a single secretary responsible for answering mail only. And if there is a balancing test, for example, how does it work in other contexts, when Congress wants to investigate, say, sitting judges? Could they subpoena their communications with other members of the panel, or with their law clerks? So is there a judicial test, and is it only peculiar to the president, or to any other official that Congress wishes to investigate?
Let me go briefly. Marty and I may or may not agree, but I do believe that balancing the needs of the two political branches, either in the oversight context or the impeachment context, is PQD, pure and simple. I'm attracted to absolute privilege, because it does enable Article III to adjudicate the more structural question. And to me, I actually rebold and say again, if this issue goes up, I think we are going to get to five, especially with two privileges working together. And one final historical point, I starkly disagree with Marty's interpretation of a Nixon case, and the implications of a Nixon, main Nixon decision and other things. The privilege there was asserted for presidential communications writ large. I actually read Nixon case quite differently, the main Nixon case, for the proposition that if a more particularized assertion of national security-based privilege would have been honored. The president cannot conduct the core powers of his office, that of foreign and national security affairs. He is nothing. And I think the court would recognize that, or at least enough justices.
So I, we do have some common ground here, in that I think it would be very difficult for courts to assess that the needs of the House, or the Senate, in any particular impeachment case, which is why I think what the executive ought to do is what executives did for so long, which is to say that the attendance of any and every agent of government, to compel them to produce all papers, public or private, official or unofficial, and testify to all facts within their knowledge, is appropriate in an impeachment proceeding. I don't think this president will abide by that. I'm not sure many modern presidents would abide by that. But I do want to say, on the other side, the president's need for absolute confidentiality that the Attorney General mentioned last night, and that Neil and I, everyone up on the panel somewhat agrees with, I do think we should take account of the fact that that rationale for the privilege is being increasingly undermined by the fact that not only does the president talk about his communications with foreign officials, and allows some people to talk, but we have this pattern in the executive branch that we don't see in the judiciary and Congress, of close aides to the president going out and writing memoirs about their communications with the president on foreign affairs and national security matters, while the president is still sitting. Nikki Haley is about to write a book about exactly that, and the president is lauding her for doing so. John Bolton might do the same. The idea that the president has to have absolute confidentiality, and the confidence that those communications will never get out, is a little bit hard to take, and this is on both sides of the aisle, when so many executive officials are so free to write about their experiences and their communications with the president.
Maybe they're trying to defray their legal expenses.
I think Ambassador Haley has something else in mind.
Judge, could I just raise a related issue? Thank you. So I have had, on a related issue, much of the litigation that the president has undertaken, and frankly, I think Steve Mnuchin's response to the request for the tax returns that was made pursuant to a statute, was a determination that Congress's, you know, sort of need for the material, I'm sorry, the investigation, or whether it was not legitimate. I frankly have a very similar view of that, which it seems to me, there ought to be an enormous discretion, enormous deference, excuse me, to Congress about whether its investigation is legitimate. And frankly, the notion that the Article II branch could render an opinion about whether the investigation is legitimate, I think that's inappropriate. I actually think that probably the judicial branch should not do it either, that that certainly has got to be something, in my view, that's committed to Congress, and is all but, I would say, nearly, I'm sure that people could come up with hypotheticals where I'd say, maybe this is a step too far, but is, should generally, I think, be absolutely committed to the discretion of Congress and not subject to review.
Could we have another question?
Chris Green from Ole Miss. I wanted to say a word on behalf of the non-Stanton article of impeachment against Johnson. So I agree, the Stanton stuff was ridiculous, but it was a bit more than bad-mouthing Congress. So Johnson had called Congress a so-called Congress. He had arguably incited race riots in Memphis in May 1866, and in New Orleans in July. He had encouraged people to kill other people in the streets. And I imagine, if you go back to the history in 1386, where High Crimes and Misdemeanors comes from, the impeachment, I think it was Sussex, it was basically not playing ball with a parliamentary committee. And I imagine a world where they remove Johnson in 1866, you get Reconstruction going considerably earlier, it's actually a much better world. Isn't that such, you know, wouldn't, you know, wouldn't that be a much better, more honest basis on which to remove the president? You don't like him because he's encouraging people to say that Congress isn't really a Congress, until they get the South back in. Wouldn't that have been better?
Well, look, he could have gone out and burned the flag, right? I mean, that was the first article, I think, or the second article that was voted on, and it was rejected, even by the radical Republican in the Senate. So I don't quite understand the argument that the president is abusing his power by, God forbid, even inciting a riot, something within the first, you know, take your word for whatever he may have been inciting, but it was still speech.
Beachable speech, right? I mean, if you literally, I mean, if the president burned the flag, and like, they went out and killed 20 people.
Things were going, tempers were running very high, and one of the Republican senators, had he not had assaulted and nearly killed one of the members of the House while they were sitting there.
Okay, we'll take the next question. I think it's you.
Okay, so I have a question in two parts. First, Judge Jones, you recommended that we, you recommended Raul Berger to our consideration. I'm wondering if you have any thoughts about Raul Berger's thoughts on executive privilege? He wrote extensively that the Constitution does not actually grant the president executive privilege. I'm also curious, Marty, you raised Attorney General Barr's speech last night, and Attorney General Barr in the speech contended that the courts should not resolve separation of powers issues, that especially disputes between Congress and the president, and he didn't speak narrowly about privilege fights, right, because the case he cited was Morrison versus Olson, Congress's regulation of the removal power. And I'm curious just what panelists think about the idea that the courts should not get involved in resolving separation of powers questions, they should leave it to the branches, sort of like, I guess, the branches worked out the Tenure and Office Act problem. Congress went to impeach, president, you know, tried to remove Johnson, or Stanton, whether he successfully physically removed him from the building or not, I think is, you know, that's not the dispute I mean to get you all to, but to the question of whether that's the right process.
Start off with Raul Berger on executive privilege. I know, I have that article, I have not studied it. I do not see how any, being on the courts, which have the greatest secrecy possible, and quite often, although we have pressing matters, we don't normally have matters as pressing as the running of the free world before us, or the nation, and I do not see how any office can function without a certain matter of confidentiality. So I just, I would disagree in principle. I would also, and Judge Randolph has had much more exposure to these issues than I on the D.C. Circuit, but again, as a matter of principle, I would seem to me that the executive, that it is, that the court, that every time you commit a decision like this to the Article III courts, there is less room for flexibility, compromise, and political discourse and discussion by those other branches. It's just the same as when the judiciary hauls off and rules on constitutional issues. To that extent, the political process is disabled from achieving democratically acceptable solutions. And the same thing is certainly true with regard to separation of powers controversies at this level of executive privilege.
One sentence, I agree with Judge Jones, in fact, I strongly disagree with Marty's general observation that all those privileges and various other things are not somehow originalist, because they're not mentioned in the Constitution specifically. Constitution has an architecture, Constitution has all sorts of propositions that are eminently derivable from its provisions, and I cannot put it any better. Article II is completely incapable of functioning by appropriate secrecy. I would say one thing, though, I have enormous esteem of General Barr, having worked with him in his early incarnation, but I do think that many separation of powers issues, to the extent that they're raised in a forceful manner by one branch, not trying to achieve accommodation, have to be resolved by Article III, including the specific immunities in issue. It would be a good thing, and if it's resolved the right thing, if the president wants to accommodate, then it's clear it's accommodation, it does not set the precedent that visages the privilege.
So it's great, because we do have a lot of common ground here. I agree with the judge and with David that there is executive privilege, because of the numbers and, right, emanations from the document and from our history, but I'm sorry, I know that most of you textualists and originalists will agree with Raul Berger, that there is no executive privilege. But I do think there is one, I just think it's going to be very difficult to adjudicate it in this context.
You'll be happy to know that George Washington agrees with you. The J Treaty.
Which he thought, he thought he would have to turn it over, turn over all the information to the House if they impeached him, so.
That's all. A gentleman in the back.
Judge Randolph, thank you. This question is directed to Judge Jones or David Rivkin, whichever of the two of you feel compelled to answer. It's in response to a comment Neil Eggleston mentioned earlier, which is, that without an OLC opinion, an executive official who chooses to claim executive privilege and not appear before a subpoena of the House could later be prosecuted by the same political party in a subsequent administration. My question to you is this, as an assistant, a former assistant U.S. Attorney issuing a subpoena on behalf of the executive branch, in order to ensure that some penalty, a criminal penalty, imprisonment, in fact, for failure to comply with an order of the court after a motion to compel is filed, going to the third branch, the judiciary, to receive that motion, that order to compel, and a failure to follow that order results in a subpoena, excuse me, an issue for, a motion for sanctions, and that sanction order is how somebody later is criminally prosecuted or criminally punished for failure to comply, is there any argument or mechanism to legitimize a subsequent prosecution, that the House of Representatives should avail themselves in some manner of the third branch before the executive branch of another administration prosecutes for criminal contempt?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow your question.
For instance, if an executive official does not appear after being subpoenaed to appear before the House of Representatives.
Right.
And then a subsequent, and they don't have an OLC opinion, they haven't gone to OLC before they don't appear, but they do claim executive privilege. Neil Eggleston had made the point that a subsequent administration, after the elections in 2020, let's say.
To prosecute them.
Could prosecute them criminally.
Without adjudicating presumably a legality, what you're talking about is a situation where you'd be prosecuted for not complying with something, even though it may have been unlawful to try to get you to testify, is that right?
I think the president would have to assert executive privilege, and I think if you were a current official who was complying with the president's assertion, whether it's right or wrong, you shouldn't be able to be prosecuted afterward. The interesting question is, the former officials who are not subject to the president's direction, if he says, "You will be violating my executive privilege," and they disagree, or if they agree, I suppose, then I think there, it's an open question, although I doubt DOJ would ever prosecute someone in that context.
Well, and let me, let me just make my point a little clearer, maybe I wasn't that clear. My point of the OLC opinion is that the OLC opinion binds the Justice Department, including future Justice Departments. And so when I got the opinion for Seamus, I was not worried that if President Trump won in 2016, that the Department of Justice could prosecute him, because he'd gotten an OLC opinion that said he did not have to appear. I thought of it as an insurance policy. I was not suggesting that there would be no possible defenses, but anybody who doesn't get an OLC opinion that thereafter binds, and look, I don't know what happens if it's a John Yoo-style, you know, OLC opinion that sort of later discredited and withdrawn, but my point is, that's sort of an insurance policy. I'm not saying you couldn't thereafter litigate it, but you're in a much more precarious place, because it may happen after criminal charges are filed against you, and frankly, nobody wants that to happen. So that was my point.
So you've answered your own question. I'm sorry.
Okay, I think we're out of time.
It sounds like, thank you.
Just give a hand to the panel, I think they do.